Good morning, everyone. It's my distinct privilege to call forth the meeting of the board of trustees and the around community college system. I thank you to everyone of you for being here and your interest in the work of this system and this board. As I said being back before, this is a culmination of a lot of work by the chancellor and staff, by all our presidents, and many others that they brought me in on their foundations. We thank you for your attendance. At this time, I'd like to recognize Pastor Michael Frawl of the Thornton Road Baptist Church, who are in the title of Lord of the Purges. Thank you for being here today.
I thank you for that. Let me just say to the board, I thank you for what you do. I was telling Mr. Thompson that I had a son that just graduated in December from the community college and one week later had him a job in the high school field. So it is a blessing and another one that's doing some dual enrollment through high school through Tredon State Community College. So I just want to say thank you for what you do and let me pray for us. Father, again, we are blessed, we're blessed beyond measure that you love us unconditionally. And so God, I pray for this board of trustees. I thank you for them. I thank you for the gift of higher education. And God, I pray that the gift that you have given us would be used to glorify your name as students are feeling a call to certain vocations. God, I pray for the professors, the presidents, the faculty. God, I just pray that as you give them wisdom, as they disperse their information to what the students are coming for. God, I pray that the students would be able to learn and be able to apply those truths and to use them to glorify you and the calling that you've given them in life. And so God, we are so blessed that you give us the gift of education. You give us a mind in which we can learn. You give us the ability and the talents for which we can perform. And so God, we are so blessed by those things that you give us. And God, we know that all truth comes from you. And so God, thank you for being the source of truth. And most importantly, we thank you for the truth that we find in your Son Jesus Christ. And it's through him that we have everlasting life. And God, thank you that you've given us that gift of eternal life through your Son, through the repentance of our sins, faith and trust in his work on the cross at Calvary. And so God, we are so blessed by all of those things. And we ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For remember to see, I have some bad chance of reading if I'm on the text. Motion to adjourn. Is that possible? Yeah. I'm saying. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approval. Do y'all hear me okay? Like me all?
No.
How is the mic here?
Someone's got something here.
Is the approval in this? I'm five is the approval in minutes in February twelve twenty twenty meetings. And we'll see this rally in advance today. This is not only a private issue. Motion by Ms. Brown is her second. Second by Mr. Mackenow. She is good. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approval for three minutes in February twelve twenty twenty meetings. Seeing five by raising your hand. Any more votes? Minutes are provided. On the sixth public comment, anyone signed up for the public comment? Seeing. We have some questions today. We have these quality issues. We can get in front of you. Seeing over here, please stand. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you. I'm seven, caller spot. We have Mr. Thomas Hartline, Northeast, County, Community College.
Obviously, I'm not Mr. Hartline. Time change going around the picture. That's right. The intervening disruption in Northeast, Chester Lake, and North East. On behalf of Dr. Dr. Campbell, our president, we are excited to be here today and share one of our meaningful statistics. I say meaningful because they're exactly that, there are lots of students, just like Mr. Hartline, who have a story of their own success. Northeast, as you know, is a very successful institution. And that is due in large part, very impressive, Dr. Campbell. His leadership has been beyond imagination. Thomas, I think you're going to see, is like the other students from Ridge State and Drake. He's an essential story. We are excited to share his story today. Dean Sherry Grace is going to introduce Thomas. Thank you, Misses.
Thank you, Dean Norton. Thank you for members of Chester Lake. I want to reiterate that without Dr. Campbell and his leadership, we wouldn't have been able to do some innovative things that we've been able to do with Thomas. Dr. Campbell was innovative in leadership with going on fifteen, seventeen years ago back when he was very young. And so Thomas has been able to take advantage of that. And I've been very excited to get to know this young man. His story is varied, from starting in a technical school, in high school, in county technology center, to taking Illinois moment to now the transfer to the former school. There's a lot in this story and we're very excited for him to tell you that. Ladies and gentlemen, Thomas Hartline.
My name is Thomas Hartline. I am nineteen years old and I go through Northeast Almanac Community College. I am in my fifth semester of nursing school and I am expected to graduate in May. I am very nervous this morning, but I am honored that Dr. Campbell chose me to represent the college. Before coming to Northeast, I went to Plankview High School in Rayville, Alabama, where I have always dreamed of being in medical field. And my original plan was to go to the University of Alabama in Birmingham. But I am so glad that a Northeast representative, Miss Stacy Miller, came to my school and talked to my graduating class about enrollment. She showed me all the opportunities that Northeast had to offer me, which has helped me jumpstart my college career. It could save me some time and money and I could start an RN program and go to work sooner. So I worked really hard to complete as many classes as possible during my high school journey. I was even a full-time college student while I was a senior at Plankview. The partnership with Plankview High School allowed classes to be more accessible and easier to take. Ms. Miller would come and advise us. She would register us for enrollment classes and she would help us apply for enrollment scholarships as well. I have taken several core academic classes due to there was no scheduling conflicts and enrollment did not take me away from my high school activities nor my peers at high school. Taking so many core academic classes also freed up my schedule to spend more time at the campus and take more time in classes. I also received some local economic development community money to help pay for a enrollment class as well. While I was going to Plankview, I went to the local technology center, Decap County Technology Center, where I took healthcare classes and I also took enrollment classes while I was there. The healthcare instructors were Northeast adjuncts and they taught medical terminology and pharmacology. And I was able to take these classes because of a technical scholarship that would allow me to take a technical class as well as a core academic class. Medical terminology and pharmacology has helped jumpstart my knowledge in medical field as well as making me feel better prepared and more knowledgeable going into the nursing program. These classes also helped me excel in Skills USA and state competitions. Skills USA is a national technical organization where students can compete and show off their skills and bring top ones to their school. I was fortunate enough to place first in first aid and CPR for two years in a row. And as a result, I gained a scholarship to go towards my degree. When I graduated from Plankview in May of two thousand and eighteen, I had thirty-four college credit hours to go towards my degree and I was accepted into the nursing program anticipating starting in the fall. Being a first-generation college student, I didn't know what was going to be asked of me. My parents, they knew what financial aid was, but that's where their expertise ended. However, Northeast provided representatives to help with the admission, application, the scholarship applications, as well as the FATS applications. Visiting the college also helped put the transition to college law. The college puts on a local Latino festival and taking part in that made the transition easier. Also going to local college and career fairs, learning more about Northeast, the activities they put on, as well as learning more of the nursing program. When I first started my college journey, I wasn't sure what was going to be like. I had no friends, no family, I knew nobody on campus. But the familiar atmosphere and the closeness and understanding with instructors made the transition easier into the college law. I worked hard through the nursing program and I've been able to pass every semester, never failing a semester, despite it being a very rigorous and competitive program. I will cherish my time at Northeast. I've made many friends on campus. I'm part of many clubs such as FAMDA CAPA, which is the National Honor Society, Sigma Theta Delta, which is the English Honor Society, and Students Nurses Associations, where I was chosen by the nursing instructors to serve as president of my class. And hopefully, the staff likes me as well. I spent majority of my time at Northeast, so much so that I decided to get a work-study job at one of the local computer labs, the Technology Learning Center. Working in the Technology Learning Center has taught me a lot about patients and how I could apply skills that I've learned in that computer lab and apply it to the healthcare setting. For example, if a student comes into the computer lab and they need help on a specific problem, we have to look at that problem and we have to figure out how to solve that problem and help the student step by step on how to solve it. It's the same thing as going into a patient's room and listening to what their problem is that day and trying to solve that problem and help them get out of the hospital faster. And just like healthcare, that student's problem is not going to be the same every day. Their problem is always going to be different. It's never changing, just like healthcare. Northeast has given me many opportunities. For example, the difficult job of opening because of manual experience and resupervision of one of the facilities. And I've been accepted into the University of Alabama in Huntsville and I applied to the University of North Alabama for my Master's in Science in Nursing. And if all goes well, I plan on getting my Master's in Science in Nursing as well as my family nurse practitioner and I will complete this within the next two years. Because I have credits to go towards my overall degree before starting the nursing program through enrollment. After finishing my education, I would like to go back to the community and open up my own practice. I would like to give back to that community that knows me and has supported me throughout my college journey. If I had to sum it all up, Northeast has helped me get started early with enrollment. And they have been there every step of the way, helping me, supporting me like a family so that way I can graduate at nineteen years old with my R and degree. I would not trade my experience at Northeast for anything in the world. And I'm thankful for the staff, the instructors, and the leadership of Dr. Campbell as well. You could not find a better candidate to serve your country than the Northeast Alabama Community College. Thank you, and you must.
Thomas, on behalf of the board, thank you for sharing your story with us. That's most encouraging, inspiring to hear, but it is indeed a tribute to your self-discipline and your own ambition that you've gotten so far, but also a tribute to Dr. Campbell, to staff, that did your mission. It's very inspiring to hear that story and what it was lyrics to song years and years ago, I'd had myself a future so bright, I've got to worship. That's what I'm saying, one of the things that crossed my mind when you talked about your plans and your reputation, except those and your work. It's a tribute to you that you've been here. Thank you. Section eight, Academic Student Affairs, Adult Education, Facilities, Physical Information Technology, and Workforce Development. I'm page eight one, is a recommendation for subject of science and certificate in medical radiologic technology philosophy state community college. This was under the board session at school. It was found out in the demonstration. Motion by Mr. Davis is their second. Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approving this medical radiologic technology program, last steps meeting, I'm seeing five by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm page eight two, request increase rest and pile room, board rates of gas state community college recommended, certified by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm page eight three, recommendation for Spartan building, company, roof and wall upgrades, and also approval for resolution for the foundation. This time I'll send the motion. Motion, Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approving this medical radiologic technology program, last steps meeting, I'm seeing five by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm page eight two, request increase rest and pile room, board rates of gas state community college recommended, certified by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm page eight three, recommendation for Spartan building, company, roof and wall upgrades, and also approval for resolution for the foundation. This time I'll send the motion. Motion, Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approving this medical radiologic technology program, last steps meeting, I'm seeing five by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm page eight eight two, request increase rest and pile room, board rates of gas state community college. This time I'll send the motion. Motion carries. I'm page eight eight four, recommendation for renovation of four yards of Enterprise State Community College, certified by raising your hand. Motion carries. I'm page eight eight six, allocation of nineteen twenty industry certification initiative for Alabama Community College. This is a motion. Motion by Mr. Smith is their second. Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approving this medical radiologic technology program, last steps meeting, I'm seeing five by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm page eight eight four, recommendation for renovation of four yards of Enterprise State Community College, certified by raising your hand. Motion carries. I'm page eight eight seven, allocation of nineteen twenty industry certification initiative for Alabama Community College. This is a motion. Motion carries. I'm page eight eight six, allocation of nineteen twenty industry certification initiative for Alabama Community College. This is a motion. Motion carries. I'm page eight eight seven, allocation of nineteen twenty industry certification initiative for Alabama Community College. This is a motion. Motion carries. I'm page eight eight six, allocation of nineteen twenty industry certification initiative for Alabama Community College. This is a motion. Motion carries. I'm page eight eight seven, allocation of nineteen twenty industry certification initiative for Alabama Community College. This is a motion. Motion carries. I'm page eight eight six, conversion, mini slay library, mini slay visit library to allied health sciences, Bishop State Community College. This is their motion. Motion carries. This is their second. Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approving this change at condition state community college, certified by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm page eight eight seven, allocation of nineteen twenty industry certification initiative for Alabama Community College. This is a motion. Motion carries. Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approving this industry certification initiative, certified by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. Section nine, executive legal and public information. I know one is supposed to property condition state community college, I would add motion. Motion carries. This is their second. Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approving this recommended purchase of property condition state community college, certified by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm page nine, page two. Approval to name of proposed indoor athletic facility Wallace Community College, noted. Is there a motion? Motion, Mr. Smith is their second. Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion. See, a discussion moves a vote. I was in favor of approving this proposed name for an indoor athletic facility Wallace State Community College, noted, certified by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm nine, page three, condition state for Shanahouche Valley Community College. This is a motion. Motion, Mr. Woods is their second. Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approving the condition state for Shanahouche Valley Community College, certified by raising your hand. Motion carries. I'm nine, page four, recommended mission state for state community college. This is a motion. Motion, Mr. Woods is their second. Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approving the mission state for state community college, certified by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm nine, page five, mission state for Lorraine B Wallace Community College. This is a motion. Motion, Mr. Smith is their second. Second by Mr. Mackenow. Discussion. Seeing them will move to vote. I was in favor of approving the mission state for Lorraine B Wallace Community College, certified by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. I'm nine, page six, approval bookstore operation agreement for great state community technical college. I would add a motion. Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Davis. This was an add to the meeting agenda. Because of time constraint, the board's having the chance to see this room in advance. Are there any questions or discussions? Mr. Ryan, anything? Or the last one? Seeing there was discussion with all the questions. I was concerned. All the questions, I was in favor of approving the bookstore operation agreement for great state community college, certified by raising your hand. Any more votes? Motion carries. Section nine, personnel.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Charlene Finkelstein with the Indian Resources Department and I have three new employees. I'd like to introduce these two. First of all, we have Ms. Angelique Grease. Please stand. Angelique joined us recently as secretary for the Alaman project. She has over twenty years of administrative experience in both the education and medical field. She served as an education aide for the Ottawa County Board of Education and as secretary and bookkeeper for the Lurgarmer County Board of Education. She also worked recently at Tredon State Community College as secretary for the A R C make and automotive project. So welcome to San Antonio. Next, I have Dr. Bronckel. Dr. Kelly joined us recently as regional workforce director, I believe, for the southern region. He has almost ten years of experience in the education field, served in the K-12 system as special ed teacher and behavioral specialist in the Enterprise City School System and as high school principal, contrariwise. He most recently served as director of workforce development for the Alabama Department of Education and still serves today as an adjunct professor at Torrey University. Thank you, Bronckel. And Dr. Alunis Rice. Dr. Rice joined us recently as interim director for adult education for the central region. Dr. Rice has over twelve years of experience in higher education, most recently as assistant vice president of student affairs and enrollment management and associate professor of history at Alabama State University. Dr. Rice also served as chief diversity officer, assistant provost for academic affairs and dean of the school of graduate studies at Lincoln University in Missouri. He's an experienced lecturer and professor. So welcome to all these new employees. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm delighted we have a report from the board trustee personnel committee chaired by.
It's okay, I'll just read our report, we recently conducted chancellor's review. And the personnel committee consisting of myself, Susan Floyd, and Blake McAnally initiated the chancellor's performance review on December ninth, twenty nineteen. In accordance with, in accordance to section six of the chancellor's employment agreement, which requires an annual review to be completed by December thirty first of each calendar year. We utilize the Alabama Community College System's customary evaluation process, which provides each member of the board trustees the opportunity to objectively evaluate and have input into the chancellor's performance review with respect to the following metrics. First, the chancellor's embracement, promotion, and advancement of the vision and mission of the Alabama Community College System. Next, the chancellor's efforts to secure the necessary capital, legislative appropriations, and other resources for proper management and operation of the Alabama Community College System. Third, the chancellor's leadership and direction in building a culture of integrity and excellence throughout the Alabama Community College System. Fourth, the chancellor's financial efficiency in managing the budget and appropriated funds in a manner to be a good steward of the state and Alabama Community College System resources. And lastly, the chancellor's efforts and intentions to work cooperatively with the board to develop and implement a fiscally responsible plan for the Alabama Community College System. I'm proud to report, once again, the board's collective evaluation of the chancellor was exceptional. Our rating scale was, was one as low and five as five, and the chancellor's composite score was four point eight one. The board has complete confidence in the chancellor's abilities as he continues to lead the Alabama Community College System. I want to share one of the board members' summary comments, which is the general consensus of the board, and quote, "The chancellor is an outstanding communicator and does an excellent job promoting the Alabama Community College System regardless of the setting." He has made a strong effort to put the focus on student success and made it a point to emphasize that defalpity across the state through a monumental professional development day held earlier this year in Montgomery, at twenty nineteen in Montgomery. He continues to provide leadership and the implementation of a new E R P system that will bring a new level of transparency and efficiency to all of our colleges. The chancellor is constantly aware of the governor's attainment goal of five hundred thousand new members of the workforce. He makes decisions that align the Alabama Community College System with the governor's educational goals. The chancellor is a decisive leader and understands the needs of the community college system and will act accordingly to ensure the success of its member institutions. Right, please, chancellor.
I'd like to express my appreciation for the board and for their support, and I think just any of our system that we're. Excited about what we have done, but I'm still excited when I think about what we must do in our board. We go forward. And I don't do this by myself. I have people I want to hear something from here before I run. And I'm gonna start with them. If you will come and update us every couple of hours. Having a strong team of people makes success, and you can't do it by yourself.
Mr. Chancellor, the board, today, chancellor's asked me to give an update to you all where we stand in safety and security initiatives from late last year. You were provided a report, some of what we were doing, and we pressed on many of those things, and we kind of give you all an update where we stand with those things. So, the first thing probably asking yourself is, why is the government affairs guy up here giving you an update with safety and security initiatives? The answer to that question is that in October, chancellor asked, we started affairs division to take ownership of the site of this issue for our system, so we were tempted to do so. What the chancellor's asked us to do is continue the initiatives that we've started, which is the audits, the security audits that we do of each colleges' emergency plans, as well as implementing statewide threat assessment. It's an initiative that we began back in two thousand eighteen. He's also asked us to take a harder look at the safety in this, this building in particular, and what we can do to enhance safety and security here, as well as look and make sure that we, along with our colleges, are in full compliance with all the state federal laws, you know, safety and security. So, these are the things I'm going to update you on today. We had a longer presentation planned, but now we've got the coronavirus issue that's, that's out there, and so, what I'm gonna do is really go through and give a high level update on these issues and spend a little more time at the end of the presentation talking about our response to this coronavirus. So, first off, we continue to do the audits of each college's emergency operations plan. As of today, all of our colleges have an active updated emergency plan that includes continuing training. We began audits in the spring of two thousand seventeen, where all twenty-four colleges were all over that year. We've since put it on a two-year timeline, where each month, Chester Crozier, who's heavily involved, is doing that at each college. And so, we completed the second round of audits in two thousand nineteen, schedules for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one have been set. And just so you can kind of see how that schedule and which college will come up each month is there. The threat assessment intervention initiative is something that we started back in twenty eighteen. This is based off Jeff Care model at Jeff State Community College, has implemented Chief Bailey at Jeff State, who's here today, instrumental in helping us get, get this going on a statewide basis. He has led trainings across the state at each college. And just to give you a status update, we've got fourteen colleges so far that are completely operational. Six colleges are in progress in the implementation phase. Of course, we've got one college, Ingram State, that's a special situation with corrections, and so, we're working to figure the best way, you know, what they need and what they don't need. And so, we're looking at that. Also, as part of this initiative, we have set up an investigative support center. So, what this is, is this was being utilized at Jeff State. They have tools at their disposal, they purchased, that allow them to perform very intricate social media investigations. You've got an employee or a student that has, something has occurred, they can go back and have tools that can go back and look at any activity on social media. And so, based on demo view we've done at Jeff State, that is now available to every college in the system. And so far, we've had over fifty cases that have been opened for a lot of different colleges, so it is being utilized, and we're very happy about that. So, as I said, we're doing this at colleges, and the chancellor wanted us to take a look at what we're doing in this building. Of course, this is an RSA-owned building, and RSA does provide a security person, an house stairs, but we wanted to see what we could do to, to even make it even more secure here. So, we've done two things, each college has an emergency operations plan, and we decided we needed to have one here at the system office. So, we've had a team of immediate staff here at the system office that have worked for many months to put together an emergency plan that has been submitted to the chancellor for his review and approval. Upon that approval, we will start to have trainings of staff here, that's, that will include drills and other exercises. It doesn't look good to have a plan if you don't put any of that in, so, looking forward to that. We also have looked at how we can secure this building a little bit, and so, we had Chief Bailey, who was here for a training back in October of last year. We asked him to do a full day walkthrough of this building, and just give us some recommendations, some issues that he saw from a security perspective, and some things we can do to secure this building even better. And so, those recommendations have been worked, put together, and have been submitted to the chancellor. We've already implemented several of those. We will have further conversations with the staff here and RSA's security on how we can look forward with some of those other things. Also looked at, in particular, when the board is meeting, when we're having board meetings, what we can do to bring an extra level of safety and security. So, those are things that are ongoing, we'll update you on, on those things as they move forward. Lastly, we've taken a much closer look at the laws that are on books, state, federal, and we are in full compliance. One of those acts is the Clary Act, that's a federal law that applies to all colleges and universities that dispense with federal financial aid programs. Requires quite a bit of reporting and disclosure of crime protection and other things. And I'll tell you kind of what brought this to light, if you all may remember the situation that occurred at Jeff State last year where they had a shooting on campus. That instituted an inquiry from U S Department of Education specifically to the Clary Act. And Chief Bailey worked through that, great, and he saw that there were some things that, that, that college, he needed to make a look at a little closer, and so, we thought, we probably need to do that on a statewide level. So, moving forward, we're going to, specifically this law, take a much closer look. Both Chief Bailey and Chester have been on some trainings related to the Clary Act. And just, I won't go over all of it, but as you can see, there are a number of requirements that are in that, in that act. Different reporting requirements, disclosure requirements, and different things that happen. And most importantly, U S Department of Education monitors compliance, and if they wanted to, it's violation of the law, it resulted in a maximum fine of eighty-eight thousand dollars per violation, and possible suspension of an institution's federal student aid program. So, something were to happen, and there was a violation of this issue, as you can see, it is a pretty substantial deal. And I will say, we have, we have reached out to the U S Department of Education, they are, they have been excited that we've reached out and have asked for their help to look at what we're doing in the state. And so, I don't think any of this is gonna happen, they, they, they wanna work with us, but that's something that we're gonna monitor, work on, and move forward. So, what are the next steps, or what are the things we're looking at, at doing? First off, and this will be a, it's your work session here, here a little bit, is the adoption of a new board policy related to safety and security. There's already one on books, it's more of a statement, it really didn't have any sort of actionable items, we're gonna put some things, we're gonna ask you for your support, approval, put some things in there that require some action steps. For us and our colleges, we would like to see, most colleges do this, we would like to see active drills and exercises as part of their emergency operations plan on every campus as we move forward, so we're gonna look at that. Also, providing additional training opportunities for faculty and staff at the colleges related to safety and security, making that a priority. We would like to assist the remaining colleges that are still out there to get on the threat suspect intervention initiative, have that implemented at any of the colleges that maybe are working on that. And then, of course, providing additional guidance, Clary Act and other state federal law, and in specific, specifically, the U S Department of Education has agreed to come here in June, assuming that that still maintains. But to do compliance training on the Clary Act, so they're gonna come to Montgomery in June, there'll be more details that come out on that later, we're excited about all that. So, coronavirus, that's the big topic these days, it's something that we're taking very seriously here. We've gotten a number of questions over the past few weeks about where things are, different issues that have popped up at the colleges. So, just, just so you know, first thing the chancellor did, he can be in the group here, staff that's involved, you know, with this sort of thing, as well as college presidents. And let's take a look at this, and see what we need to do on a statewide level when it comes to guidance. What are the issues that are out there on the college's level that we need to address? That group met for the first time yesterday, and we've got some things on the table that we're gonna be working on. Also, we are providing guidance, if it comes down from the Department of Public Health, as well as the CDC. We had a staff member go planting yesterday at the Huguenot facility, and receiving updates from the state of where we're staying currently. We're collaborating with all the different entities, making sure that when we get information, we're sending that immediately to the colleges. And one of the things, we're certainly monitoring the trips, the, the schedule, especially international. I'll tell you, currently, the State Department of Public Health has recommended avoiding all international travel. Based on that, we get the system office, so we're strongly recommending to our colleges to avoid all international travel. So, that's, that's, the colleges have a, have a strong recommendation from our office as, as we move forward. Certainly, this is an ever-evolving situation. What I say today may be different tomorrow, and may be different next week, and we're continuing to work on it. Really, right now, the main precautions that are being recommended are the same ones that are recommended for the flu, wash your hands, the extreme COVID vaccine, all of those sorts of things. We will be, our group will be issuing formal guidance to the colleges, as well as system office staff by the end of this week, on other matters, things like leave, travel, and other things, other questions to do with this. That's kind of where we're at currently with it, of course, like I said, it's, it's never evolving. We do not have any confirmed cases as of right now in Alabama, but that's something we monitor, especially in spring break, curves, folks leave, come back to the state. So, that's kind of a very brief overview of where we're at with safety and security, and specifically this issue. Any questions?
I'd add, we're gonna monitor each student, as I've just made, sat here. And each of the students, any initiative or event. And one of the issues often comes from leave, those kinds of things. The other is about getting out of one school, trying not to, you know, have a major problem with the student. Maybe the school has some late preparation, we don't have online, trust in progress, basically, do that. I, I always recommend colleges will take that initiative locally, and really focus it on how, and that's really the decision. Any other, any other things that we would like to add, leave in mind, and lock in on.
I will say, in yesterday's meeting, the others' offices have issued some guidelines, a template, to, for each, because I asked each educational institution to look at that, as, as you all put your plans together for how to deal with a number of different scenarios and circumstances that come up. If that hasn't already been, been sent, it will be sent in short order, and we would ask you to take a look at that, and as you put your plans together to use that, that too, as we move forward. And again, we will keep sending out guidance as we move forward. And again, we will keep sending out guidance as we move forward.
In response to that earlier, you mentioned, I'm not saying the number, the colleges are actively, and the left plant, some of those are in the works. You can go back to that. You're missing, yes, that one. So you're missing, that's twenty four.
There's a handful.
Okay.
Of our students.
There's one.
All right, thank you.
These are all things that feel necessary, hopefully don't ever need them. Need them and knock out the students. It's good to be close to our students. Keep perfect. I'm asking people, people that are experts in health, and I'm asking people that are working in the hospital association, just starting in the nursing home association, what we're really helping to drive into everything we can, you know, DDP that exists.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Chancellor Baker, good morning. Thank you. I worked with a chart nurse who called me Richard for a year, and I answered. So all my thought for her first was, hey you, so I answered. It's my pleasure to have you this morning. As Chancellor said, it's an exciting time to share with some of the partnerships that are going on. You've heard of several of the last board sessions about the amazing CTE partnerships, and the health partnerships are starting to really kick in. And most of those are starting with, from the state level, Alabama Nursing Home Association, and the Alabama Hospital Association, or ALABAW. So we were approached by the Alabama Nursing Home Association about their workforce needs growing through 2030. And so if you follow some of this health literature, by 2030, typically when we look at health disorders, you hear the most about nursing shortage is coming. And that is true. By 2030, you are looking at a major shortfall across the nation with long-term care nurses, particularly because this is often a very difficult area to recruit students who want to know more. And so with that, what we helped develop with them is, I'll go for just a second, is the Alabama Nursing Career Pathways Initiative. So this is very similar to the FAME models that you see with the other CTE concentrations. And so local employers surrounding those colleges are able to get together and recruit students to externships that are paid. And in addition to those paid externships, they're also offering scholarships for anything that might be an out-of-pocket expense for those students that would not be covered by dental pay. And in addition to that, they are also coming forward to paying for the licensure exams for these students as well. And so these students are able to do paid externships, which will eventually become apprenticeships, in long-term care. And eventually, we'll be offering tracks in behavioral health and other areas in the hospital realm that are also just as equally difficult to recruit these students too. And so you may have seen recently, not only through our ACCS news feed, through Rachel and her team, but also through Southern Union's team, a signing event that was originally placed. And that signing event did go national with some long-term care and hospital-related advertisements out there and publications. So to bring a topic of that article before we go ahead and share with you after the beginning of the day, I won't take up any more time than necessary, but this is employer-led orientation that's complementary in terms of program. So this is not necessarily taking the place of that classroom structure with that clinical time, but this is adding to and augmenting that from an employer aspect. And so our employers are extremely excited, and you'll see more colleges coming on board very soon as these employers are working with us to reach out to those colleges, and again, more signing events across the state. So very exciting. In those partnerships that we discussed, the Alabama Hospital Association had also reached out, are wanting to develop some adult education pathways for their difficult recruiting and hard-to-reclaim employee pathways as well. And they will also be bringing on, like I said, the behavioral health and some of those other areas that it's difficult to recruit new graduates who want to go and work in some of those areas. In addition to that, we've been working with Alabama Board of Nursing to develop some pathways from medical assistant to LPN. And so these are very similar to the bridge programs that you hear about now for paramedics and LPNs to bridge into RN programs. And there's not a lot of the bridge options for students to bridge into LPN, which is where that workforce name is, is where we're showing right now. So I'm excited to be able to hopefully share a little later on in here that that has been approved. As far as nurse apprenticeships, we've worked with nursing, amending the Nurse Practice Act to create the legal structure needed for those students to become paid apprentices. Because again, most apprenticeships are taking place in what we would call those internships. And with nursing, they can't take place with those clinics. And so we've had to work with them to create a structure that these students can form certain skills outside of that clinical area, outside of the colleges. And so, and lastly, we'll work with the Alabama Department of Early Childhood Education. As you may know, Alabama leads the nation for pre-k education programs, and their department is forming a statewide model for apprenticeship and partnering with us to help with that model. So we're excited to be able to share that information with you tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. This has been an exciting opportunity for the Department of Hospital Association, nursing and health. Nursing, straight opportunity, blocking, and we must job quickly, and punishing, aren't living, and getting education. That's something that we're pushing, simply and. I think that'd be some light. But I would like you to do some of this.
Good morning, good morning. To Chairman Thompson, all of our board of trustees members, Chancellor Baker, thank you for the opportunity this morning to talk just a little bit about the division of student success and to share some of what is happening in that division. We're certainly excited about what's going on there. We know that we are making a positive impact on student success around our entire system. So this morning, I want to introduce to you Mr. Olivier Charles. Olivier is the Vice Chancellor or Assistant Vice Chancellor for Student Success and is working very closely to help us to accomplish those things that the Chancellor has outlined for us with regard to student success. Olivier has spent his entire career in the student services arena, having worked at the University of West Alabama, Auburn University at Montgomery, and most recently as Dean of Students at Enterprise State Community College. Matt and I have finally started back talking. We're speaking again. Anyway, Olivier has actually worked in the area of admissions, enrollment management, student affairs, judicial affairs, all of those things that are key and pertinent to overall student success. So Olivier is going to share with us this morning some of the things that are happening in our division. Olivier Charles.
Olivier, I don't have your advantage. And how would you tell us a little bit about yourself? This is an example of superintended, who has gone through a lot of reasons that state government doesn't excuse.
It's a lot of pressure on me this morning. First, my boss introduces me, then the big boss asks me. I'm joking. Everyone, of course, my name is Olivier Charles. And to not go too deep into it, because I've been told that I only have 15 minutes to talk, and I'm a talker, so if I start, I'll talk all day. But I was originally born and raised in Port-au-Prince, Haiti, and I grew up there, and we moved to the States when I was 12, I believe. And I recently just earned my citizenship two years ago, so I just became a U.S. citizen. And I thank you. And a lot of people don't know that about me, because I don't have an accent anymore. And I tell them the reason is I went to public school. I learned to curse before I learned to speak English. So, so I'm being somewhat honest, to be honest with you. But, you know, growing up in a third world country and really using that as a reason to get an education, I was lucky that basketball got me to college, but I ended up not even playing because I tore my ACL before the season started. But I was lucky because I had an academic scholarship as well, and I was able to stay to school. So I don't talk about it much, about being from a different country or being raised in a different country, not because I'm ashamed of it, I'm proud of it actually, but it's just something that I've just gotten so accustomed to that I've just been Americanized, if you will. So the Chancellor and I had a conversation a few weeks ago, and I kind of told him a little bit about my background, and he just kind of looked at me, you serious? Yes, sir. So I actually didn't have indoor plumbing until we moved to the United States. So there are a lot of things that always tells students in my previous roles that we take for granted, particularly of free education. We take for granted that a lot of people just don't have the opportunity to get, even if they want it. So I'm grateful, I'm humbled to be in the position that I'm in, and I'm really excited to even be in this role and then being afforded the opportunities that I have had through education. I have been extremely fortunate in every single role that I've had, I have been able to work with and work for amazing people, amazing leaders that have guided me. So I'm proud to be here, I'm proud to be in the role that I am in right now. I consider myself lucky to work every day with Cynthia Anthony, somebody that I admire and respect very dearly, and those of you that have worked with her know the type of person she is. I consider myself lucky to work with Chancellor Baker, who has, who is probably the strongest advocate of student success in this building. He cares about it, he believes in it, and everything that he does and everything that he wants us to do is around that premise. So, Board members, Chancellor, thank you for the opportunity to address you today about some of the things that we have going on in student success. I will do my best to stay within the 15 minutes. I hope that what I just said did not count towards those 15 minutes. But if you will endorse me for just a few minutes, I want to share some updates with you. And I will briefly go over just three things with you. The first is just an overview of our department, what we do, who we are, talk to you about three current projects or a few current projects that we have going on, but I'll highlight two of them, because we feel like those will have a big impact or a significant impact on our system. And I'll highlight just two future projects that we have coming up very recently, right after our ERP implementation. So Dr. Anthony provided an update to the board a few months ago, and she gave an overview of our division, who we are, what we do. And I wanted to use that same slide, just because, and I won't read this to you, but you know, to put it in short, our division has really three pieces that we do with student success, provide leadership, guidance, and support to all of our colleges. So those are broad, but that's really what we do, and we deliver those three things through a few ways. And one of those is being enrollment management training, enrollment management help. That is a hot topic at every college you can talk to around the nation right now. Everyone wants to grow. Everyone wants to keep students. So that will continuously be a topic, enrollment management, as we continue to go through the work that we do. Advising, we handle, we help a lot of colleges establish advising models. That is something that we're doing a lot of lately, just because retention is also a focus of a lot of our campuses. And in order to have a strong retention model, you need a strong advising model. So we spend a lot of time helping our colleges build advising models that fit them. You know, we don't have a box advising approach that we just give to colleges and say, make this work. We try to learn about the college, learn about their students, and find the best model for them, what have you, based on their needs. We also do a lot of work with doing enrollment. We are doing more work with doing enrollment these days, and I'll highlight that a little bit later. We help with financial aid issues. We also work with career and college transfer. We help our colleges establish practices to help students transfer. Of course, we still do quite a bit of transfer. Our colleges still do quite a bit of transfer. We work with student life initiatives within our colleges, so whether it is SGA, judicial affairs, establishing sound policies in campus clubs and organizations. We do a lot of work with student life and help our colleges establish practices within that. And lastly, we work with staff development. Dr. Anthony and I do a lot of staff training, sometimes together, sometimes separately, but everything from process mapping, you know, so they can see the life cycle of their students. We also do some leadership training for new or aspiring leaders. So we kind of cover a broad base of things, just based on what our presidents and our campuses need from. So our division is busy. We spend a lot of time on the road, we spend a lot of time helping our colleges establish sound practices. So I say all that to say, we are laser focused on the student experience, and you know, this is the Chancellor's quote, this is Dr. Anthony's quote as well. So everything we do is based around student success. And I think a lot of people think that sometimes student success lives in student services. And I'm a student services guy at heart, that's what I've always done my whole career, but student success takes the entire campus. It takes the instructional side, it takes the business office, it takes financial aid, it takes everybody working together so that that student can have a positive experience. As you all know just as well as I do, if they're mad at one office, they're mad at the entire institution. So student success takes everyone. So we always preach that, that we don't just work with student service offices, we help with student success, we're two different things. So, and I know I'm flying, but I was trying to get to this slide. So I want to talk to you about some of our current practices, some of our current things that we have going on right now. And I want to highlight two in particular, those being our Summer Milk Project and the other being the GEAR Up Project. The first one is the Summer Milk Project. What is Summer Milk? Thank you for asking. So, and it is not that. I know everybody gets excited about that picture. I wish Summer Milk was just some ice cream, but that is not what Summer Milk is. Summer Milk is a phenomenon, if you will. And essentially, what Summer Milk means is a high school senior who applies to one of our colleges, but something happens between the time that they graduate in May or June and August, and they don't enroll. So that student essentially melts away from that admission. So you would think that this is normal, and it's always happened, so Summer Milk is not a new term. It's just a lot of focus has been placed on that lately. And particularly, this started with four-year institutions, because four-year institutions spend a lot more money to recruit students. On average, it costs about $500 for a four-year public institution to recruit a student. It costs a community college about $150 to recruit a student. So what the statistics say is that 40% of students that apply to any community college nationwide never enroll. So they apply, they turn in all of the documents that we ask for, they graduate, we think that they're about to enroll, but something happens in the summer, and they just don't make it. Now, you know, beyond that, beyond the 40%, if you dive a little deeper into it, you know, we know who those students are. Those students are typically first generation, low-income students, or minority students, particularly Latinx and African-American students. So we know who those students are, and I can do another presentation for two hours and tell you what the reasons are, and what the barriers are those students have in front of. So because we know who those students are, because we know what the percentages are, we're inclined to do something about it, because I'd hate to come up here and present a problem to you and not present a solution. So this is what we're doing. We are launching what we call the Summer Milk Project. And what the Summer Milk Project is, is nudging. And nudging is an advertising, well, it's not a new term, but it's an advertising practice where, you know, you kind of push and prod somebody to do something. In other words, you bother them until they're tired of it, and they finally do it. I mean, that's innocence nudging. So, you know, I'll use myself as an example. When I drop my dry cleaning off, I get a text message, you know, saying it's been received and it's not confirmation. Three days later, I get a message saying that it's ready. And if I don't pick it up every three days, Jim Massey is texting me until I finally get tired of it, and I gotta go get my clothes. So that's nudging. That's an example of nudging, or if you shop on Amazon or Walmart.com and you leave items in your basket and your cart and you never get it, and then they reach out to you and say, pay for it, that's nudging. So that technology has made its way to education, and it's working. It is absolutely working. Georgia State, who a lot of people know is one of the leaders in retention and student success, if you ask them what they did, what was the first thing that they did, Tim Rennick would probably tell you that nudging is one of the first practices that he put in place. But it works, because now nudging has changed to text messaging, and text messages have a 91% read rate, right? Email only has 12. So you get a lot more done with the text, and if any of you have kids, you know, probably I would guess 10 or above, they probably have a cell phone, and they're texting on that. So that technology has really helped higher education reach a lot of students. So, you know, I say all that to say that we have been fortunate to be a part of a grant with AIC, the Alabama State Department of Education, and a company called AIR, the American Institute of Research. And they are going to help us launch a text messaging campaign. Twelve of our colleges have agreed to participate, so we're pretty excited about that number. And what they will do is, starting in May, mid-May... And what they will do is, starting in May, mid-May, students in the service areas of those community colleges will receive 12 text messages between May and August. So, probably a message per week until the time that they enroll. But what makes this project really exciting is the type of messaging that those students will receive. They're not just going to get, you know, "Hey, John, you know, fill out your FAFSA." They'll get, "Hey, John, fill out your FAFSA, and here's the link to fill it out." And the next week, they'll probably get another reminder and so forth. So, every text message will be action-driven, so we can measure, we can see how it's working, so that we can actually put steps in front of those students. Our goal is to eliminate as many barriers as possible to get them to enroll at one of our colleges. So, I'm thankful to the presidents that have agreed for their colleges to participate in this, in this project. We see nothing but positive results. This is just one of those situations where we can't lose, right? If we don't participate in this, then we're taking away that opportunity. But if we do, we have a chance to help our colleges gain enrollment, so it's a win-win for us as a system. One of the cool things about that particular grant, and I hate to harp on it, is that it's two-way messaging. So, the students won't be, you know, one-way texting, and then it stops right there, and they also won't be texting a robot, it will be a live person behind the scenes. So, as a part of that grant, AIR is going to hire interns. There will be a team of interns whose job, and this is really a job, to sit there and text all day. And the goal behind text messaging, and all of you know, is instant, you know, you have to have instant responses, instant gratification, because nobody wants to left with those three little dots, you know? iPhone, if you have an iPhone, yeah. But, but nobody wants to be left on hold. So, when a student sends a message, they want a response right away, and that's the goal. Every college is coming up with a list of frequently asked questions that students will ask, so immediate responses, real responses from the college, and the things that we can't respond to, we are promising the student that we'll get back to them within 12 to 24 hours. So, I feel pretty good about it. Right now, where we are in the process, we are helping our colleges craft their text messages, and in April, we will survey the high schools in the area of those colleges that have agreed to participate, so that the students can declare what college they would like to attend, and the text messages will be branded for the college. So, it will look like Lawson State is actually texting the student, they can't tell who it's from, what company's behind the scenes. So, we're pretty excited about that. And starting in May, after the students graduate, we will launch a text messaging campaign, track it throughout the three months, and then the fall, we'll be able to measure who enrolled and who didn't enroll. So, we're pretty excited about the project, but overall, I think we're pretty excited about the potential impact of this project, which is the increased enrollment opportunity. We can engage students a lot earlier and keep them engaged throughout the whole process until they enroll. And the other piece, which is my favorite, is that we can connect them to the college a lot earlier, because essentially that's what's happening, that's why students drop out of the phone, is because they're not being connected to the college a lot faster. So, you know, and I'm originally a special education major, was supposed to be a teacher, and one of the things I can tell you that we can control is what happens during the day, you know, at a school, but after school, during the summers, and all of those pieces, we can't. So, the best thing we can do is to keep our college branding and keep our name in front of those students to try to get them through our doors as soon as possible. So, that is the Summer Melt Project, so we're pretty excited about that, and I hope you all can see the potential impact of this project. The next one is one that you all probably heard about in some shape or form, and that is GEAR Up. To best explain what GEAR Up is for the people that don't know, I, you know, I thought the best way to do it was to use a map. There are two GEAR Up programs in the state of Alabama. One is GEAR Up Alabama, which is in red, and that is across the black belt of the state, so as far west as Sutter County, and as far east as Russell County, and then there's GEAR Up Birmingham, which is just Birmingham City Schools. GEAR Up as a whole is a federally funded program, is a grant program, and the job or the purpose of the program is to help a cohort of students become college-ready. So, the, for example, the GEAR Up Alabama cohort has been a part of the cohort since they were in eighth grade, and the goal of the program is to get them college-ready. So, tutoring, college trips, ACT prep, all of those things are supposed to be taken care of by the GEAR Up program. For some reason, people think that the community college system runs GEAR Up, we do not. We have a stake in it, and our stake in GEAR Up is really two pieces. One, as a system, we have agreed to award every single student that graduates as a GEAR Up student a waiver to attend any of our institutions in the state, and that is a last dollar waiver. So, after they complete the FAFSA, whatever their Pell Grant does not cover, our institutions will cover the difference if there is any. We've done some preliminary research, and we think that about 80 to 85% of those students will receive a Pell Grant, so hopefully it will not be a large financial burden on our institutions at all. So, the first piece is that the students will receive a waiver. The second piece, which I really think is the most exciting piece, their parents, if they want to, can enroll in any Alabama community college tuition-free. I would play a game and have everyone guess how many parents have taken advantage of that, but the truth is just not that many. Less than 50 parents, say why, have taken advantage of that. So, we wish more parents would take advantage of that opportunity to earn a credential at one of our community colleges. Our colleges have done an amazing job of reaching out to the students and reaching out to the parents and being involved. The good news is that out of the 4,500 students that are currently in the senior class, the first cohort of GEAR Up, which is graduating May in a couple of months, out of the 4,500 or so students that are in that cohort, 3,000 of them have committed to one of our colleges, right? So, we're pretty excited about that. But that's just a commitment, you know? Just, I just got through talking about Summer Melt and the fact that some students melt away, but 3,000 of them have committed to our colleges, and we're pretty excited about that. And I took the liberty of putting the top six colleges, just by number of students that have committed to them. You can see that geography plays a role, so it makes sense that these colleges are our top six. Trenton is leading the way and doing an amazing job of it, and we hope that all of these colleges see an increase in enrollment because of that program. I will say, every college in the system, whether you are near a GEAR Up program or not, every college in the system has received at least 40 students that have committed to attend that college. So, what we've done in our office is we've built a backend process to track these numbers, and then every week, we're pushing out an email to every dean of students, every dean of students at our institutions, and also to admissions contacts in our institutions as well, so that they know who those students are, their address, or information if they want to reach out to them. So, we're excited about this program, we hope to help those students, we hope that all 3,000 of them matriculate and enroll at our colleges, but it's just another way as to how we're working with a lot of different agencies to increase enrollment at our colleges. So, and I know I'm getting tight on my 15 minutes, but to go into a couple of our other projects, and then I'll just broadly explain these. One of the things that we noticed, Dr. Anthony and I noticed, was that there is a need for us to have a new senior officer training. What we mean by that are dean-level positions, or VP-level positions, senior cabinet-level positions. We noticed, particularly, and we noticed this in the Dean of Students Association, that we had about seven new deans of students that are new to the system overall, so they need to help navigating and understanding what we do at this office and what everyone else does around this building. And then, in talking to Dr. Chambers and her division, she noticed that she had some new folks as well. So, we all decided to work together and really bring a new officers' roundtable, new chief officer roundtable, and that actually is tomorrow. So, I think we have 20 people or so signed up, we're pretty excited about that, but it's also a testament as to what's going on in our colleges. We kind of have a new wave of leadership coming in, and we feel like it's our job to, at the minimum, explain to them some of the resources that we have in this building. So, all day tomorrow, from 9:00 until about 3:30, those folks will be in this building, and we'll get a chance to tell them a little about our divisions, but also a little bit about the resources that we have within the system. We are doing a comprehensive review of our dual enrollment practices. Dr. Anthony is leading a task force in that. Dual enrollment is ever-growing and ever-changing, and we have been lucky to have been a beneficiary of so many great things from it, and at the same time, we want to make sure that we're helping our colleges along as well. Dual enrollment is a big monster, and some of our campuses have huge enrollments because of dual enrollment. So, we want to continue to support them and help them where we can, but we also, and I hate the word standardization, and that's not what we want to do, but there are some things that we need to standardize to make sure that we are in compliance, and that's what we're working towards. So, we're working towards helping each college continue to have the autonomy that they have within their communities and do the things that they need to do, but also establishing just a little bit of standardization to help us move forward, you know, for accreditation and other purposes. We are working on a Title IX training. I think every president in here would agree with me that, as a system, we need to make sure that our Title IX coordinators on our campuses are trained and are equipped to handle situations. A lot of people assume that Title IX only has to do with women's rights or discrimination against women in athletics, but Title IX law is so much broader than that. In fact, I would say that those are probably the least issues that we get, and we probably get a phone call per week about a Title IX issue. So, one of the things we want to do is leverage that to bring someone to train our people. So, we're going to ask every college to send two or three people if they can, and probably do a very intense two-day training on Title IX practices, because Title IX is one of those things, and again, every president would agree with me here, if you're confident in the person that's handling it, then everything else will go well. So, they will get a credential, and we are bringing in the leading agency in the country to train our people on Title IX. And lastly, and then I'll get off this microphone, is we are very involved in the ERP process. Cohort Two is finalizing their implementation now, and one of the things we want to make sure is that Cohort Two and Cohort One has as much support from our office as possible. Ben and Karen from IT have been so gracious to work with us, they have really answered a lot of our questions. Last week, we were lucky to have a meeting with all of the deans of students, and they were able to voice some concerns, and Ben and Karen were wonderful because they were there to listen and help provide support. We know how stressful that is to implement a brand-new system, a brand-new technology across the whole system, so it's stressful for a lot of people, but we have to get through it, and we have to do it, because it's going to make us better. So, we are taking that role and trying to be the mediator and trying to make sure that our colleges have a voice, but also, you know, Ben and Karen can get their point across as well, which we understand completely, is that that system needs to be implemented. So, we're heavily involved in that process to help both sides come to a reasonable solution. And, I thought I was done. Lastly, just two future projects that we have on the horizon for you. After we get through the ERP implementation, as a system, we are, again, working with IT, with Ben and Karen, we're going to try to implement two softwares, system-wide. One will be a CRM software for recruitment, and the other will be a CRM software for advising. The reason that these pieces are so important is because they will arm our people at our colleges with a tool to track their students, whether they're recruiting them, whether they're advising them. It will arm our people with a tool to actually see what those conversations were, how they helped the students, and how they matriculated, and that is extremely important, just as important as the ERP, because those systems will give our presidents the ability to see what's going on in a broad sense, but it'll give our folks the ability to speak directly to students and manage their student. So, we are pretty excited about both of these softwares, because both of them will impact enrollment management as a whole. So, just wanted to share those things with you, and at this time, I will gladly take any questions that you have. Multiple choice, please.
As we can deal with student success, and also express our appreciation to the instructors on this ground. I was back in, and I had an opportunity to visit our calendar a couple of weeks ago, and we were looking at facilities, we also had a chance to interact with the professors and instructors, and their passion for our students is unbelievable, and I think those instructors are, we have successful stories from Mr. Hartline, since we're, we want to be able to pay our appreciation to the instructors as well. It's good leadership, but again, those that are right there with the students.
I agree. Yes, sir, thank you for saying that, I agree. Thank you all.
Thank you, Olivier. Look, I have a piece. I have to say, I'm excited to talk to you. Thank you, Chairman. We will, if there's no objection, we'll work with those current work sessions, and we'll have some work session. We will meet, we will meet next month, April 8, in the field, in the primary school. Seeing you in good time.
Just comment, so this committee, so this team, our place is loaded, and I do think that we have some dead fat that are under the test, which is knock on wood, but it's different, so I thank for the effort someone put into work ahead of time to give the good numbers to us, so I do appreciate that. And on a personal note, I'll thank you, Chancellor, thank you for your open honesty.
Thank you all. I give you one great opportunity, Chancellor, thank you for all the contributions at this time, I would say, and I would say I. And we'll begin our work.